None recorded, obviously if there are any at the time of discussion, it can be noted then. 47523, apologies for absence please.
All right, so apologies have been received from councillors Evans, Jefferson. Oh, there's more, there's more. Mitchell and Terry.
Thank you. So then I'll move on to 47623, the minutes of the full council meeting held on 24th of October. Those reviewed, which is one, two, three, four and five. Are councillors happy with the content of those minutes?
Agreed.
Happy for me to sign, thank you. Moving on to 47723, the committee meeting minutes, the amenities of the 7th of November. So Jeremy, I believe.
Yep, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Very happy to move the minutes from the amenities meeting held on the 7th of November. There are no recommendations, it's all resolved business and I extend the minutes.
Happy to move them. Yep, thank you. Moving on to the planning committee meeting minutes of the 14th of November. I believe I was in the chair. And again, it was all resolved business. Pages one, two and three, for those that were there, I'm happy with the true record. Move the minutes.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. We go to the venues and markets of the 15th of November. Terry and Landon to finish up.
It's the venues and markets, it seems to be communications committee from 14th of November. All the shoes will reside.
Happy with those? Agreed. Thank you. And on to the finance and personnel committee meeting minutes of the 21st of November. Jeremy, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Move the minutes from the 21st of November. There is one recommendation, let's get to it. Item 462, review of the existing committee structure. The committee discussed the paper that was circulated prior to the meeting and agreed the following. Terms of reference to be standardised for all committees. Presidential and commercial property leases to be overseen by the finance and personnel committee. Property management to be overseen by the venues and markets committee. That the GWS standing forth board membership be reduced to nine persons comprising six councillors plus three non-councillors. And every committee will have a health and safety item added to their agenda. So move the recommendation.
Thank you, so we had councillor Blackborne proposed and councillor Brindle seconded. Are we happy with those proposals and seconds for the recommendation? All those in favour? Pretty much carried, thank you. Completes the minutes. Moving on to 47823, mayor's remarks and reports. I was pleased to attend the BTO awards evening in London. It was nice to see that Thetford based BTO is really respected as a national organisation and it's great to have them centred here in Thetford and to see what work they're getting on to do. Once more, we had the service of remembrance at East Retham and that was well attended. And I think it goes each year and I know the representatives from the Czech, Slovak and Polish ambassadors were there. And it was nice to see a contingent of the local people there as well laying wreaths. Then following that was our towns armistice day. Wreath laying on the Saturday, followed by our remembrance Sunday on parade. As ever, the town came out in force and I thank all those councillors and staff that were involved in putting it together. We are aware that we need to liaise with the British Legion in future events to try and make it even better. I think we mourn the loss of John Wayne, who has done so much by the remembrance parade each year. And I think we all need to do a little bit more as a council to talk to the Legion and make that work further. But that was me. Nothing from the deputy, thank you. Okay, so 47923, town council representatives on other bodies. Table, anybody? Councillor Brindle.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to say a word about the citizens' advice, which is locally known as CADAT, citizens' advice this and Thetford. I attended the AGM one or so ago and found, as you might expect, that the need for citizen advice has grown significantly in the last couple of years or so and continues to grow. And the particular area of need is finance, but of the two other big areas that they normally assist people with, which are relationships and housing, those are influenced. If people are poorer, the other items also suffer. So they are extremely busy at the moment. And the result of that is that they're short both of funding and of volunteers because it is a charity and they are volunteers who may be able to assist people. So, for example, Cloverfield Church has agreed to make CADAT the charity for its Christmas. It has one charity each Christmas. That sounds to be good, but it's a drop in the ocean. And I really am using this moment to publicise the fact that any help that organisations or individuals can give to citizens' advice, particularly here in Thetford, is always extremely appreciated and extremely valuable. We have a great need in our town for people being able to turn to someone who knows about the subject and can give advice if they're in difficulties. Thank you.
Mr Britton.
Mr Chairman, just a quick points. First, thank you to Mike for mentioning the CEB, which is close to my heart because I actually volunteer there and I'm due to go back there to volunteer as a legal advisor and hopefully contribute that way. But they are in much need, a much more applied than people, volunteers, they want to get involved. And the more people gets involved, the better because they are really stressful work. Unfortunately, the demand keeps on rising, therefore we need more people involved. The second point is I wanted to make a notification to all the councillors that are already here because I am due to talk to the clerk and send an email out to invite all councillors to participate or attend. As I am basically organising a delegation to go from Thetford Town Council here, some of delegates here from Norfolk, to go to the Bushkis Embassy and the consulate in London to visit and to have, you know, liaise between the two institutions and then build that bridge and discuss some points that are priority for many other people that lives in our area and what can be done through services and from both sides and to sort of bring an amicable meeting and get people to know the ambassador which made himself available because I do collaborate within one other capacities outside of my council role. So I was able to build that link and able to organise a delegation. I spoke to the mayor, very kindly agreed to go to London for the centres. The invite extends to all other councils that want to take part. I might be able to extend the invite to a representative or a county councillor as well. And if that's the case, then the email will be circulated with the invite, those parties. But just to let you know, this is being stipulated for the end of January. Provisional date is the 31st of January, but by the end of this week, as not any sent email yet out, I'll know for sure if there's a final date and the timings to be able to send the invite out for everybody to participate. So whoever's available wants to come along is more than welcome.
Further, two councillors represent. So we then move on to reports from county and district councillors. Go down the table. Mr Land.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For Breckland Council, under questions without notice, asked the deputy leader about the Norfolk floodline, which Breckland District Council are partly responsible for. This potline was unavailable for residents the weekend of the most serious recent floods. And there was some concern about this. I was assured this wasn't normal procedure and that the floodline will be available at weekends in future. And that Breckland District Council Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I asked, asked a question of the leader, I think it was, about former social houses being auctioned off without the knowledge of the appropriate walk councillors. A practice that doesn't appear to happen with housing providers outside this area. I feel very strongly that councillors should be made aware of stuff that's happening in their ward. Didn't really get an answer to this one, but it's something to be considered.
Mr Coid, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I report that the meanwhile, the protocol is in force as of today and will be reviewed on Friday based on the forecast. Secondly, Cabinet on Monday approved the Thetford Conservation Area approval as a draft consultation. Thirdly, they approved Breckland Design Guide going out for consultation. And fourthly, they presented the Breckland Local Development Scheme as going out for consultation. So there would be three consultations running in Thetford. And there was some concern that these don't govern things down. I mean, I don't think that the way they have been a subject of appraisal for at least two decades. So it's probably overdue. The other policy which also affects the town council is that the public health funeral policy approved and that sets the rules for when the council pay for the funeral and how they try and recover costs etc. And it's relatively sensible, that three page document, but well worth the funeral cost of that. They approved the refresh of the local council tax reduction scheme. And they approved a new HMO licensing policy which involves about a 30% increase in licensing fees which reflects the cost of monitoring HMOs. And if you are a landlord who seems to take all the boxes and behave responsibly, you go and find your licence. If you're one of the more difficult ones to deal with, you go to run your licence and it costs the same. So maybe where there've been a couple of large 30, 40,000 pound fines on illegal HMOs recently and we can expect it to continue. And just a question was asked by one of the councillors about our treasury management policy. On the 12th of December, there's a three power Zoom training session which is compulsory for members of Treasury, of governance and audit that is open to councillors. So those who takes special interest in that, I would advise them to sign up for that. And just a general reminder from sitting on planning for a number of years. Planning objections will only have due consideration if they relate to matters that our planning policy matters. And we've learned all town councils have fully integrated the retained policies and the secondary action plan. These are in addition to the local plan and the national planning policy framework. Just clarification about the council house sales. Different social housing providers have different policies, but they do not have a statutory duty to inform districts when they're selling. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Project, thanks, everybody can hear. So the deadline for proposals for the Road Safety Community Fund was the 24th of this month. My submissions have been made for 30 mile an hour speed rounders at various points around the town to further drivers' understanding, shall we say, of the changed speed limit. Additionally, I'm hoping for 20 mile an hour repeater signs on both Rosecroft and Sherlock Road on the Cloverfield Estate to aid road users also in their understanding of that particular speed limit in the area. Obviously, you'll appreciate that those proposals will support your work as a town council with the SARS II machines and also address issues that have arisen at both residents groups and the Safe at Thetford Action Group. I had a lengthy walk around the Thetford East Division on the 14th of November with our new highways engineer, where we looked at footpath green statement issues, tree issues on Castle Street, which actually delighted have now been dealt with, and to residents' satisfaction, which is always a bonus. Drain issues and other road and footpath condition issues in the Woodlands area, Norwich Road Estate area, Cloverfields, Old Croxton Road and of course the town centre. We've identified some areas that will also have a deep clean in terms of the road drains once those pesky final leaves have fallen so that we can help reduce some funding risks that have been identified. Finally, on our break Thetford trek, we agreed to the next stage of works on Green Lane, which will help improve drainage. For anybody that's walked along there, there's a really nice bit that we did last year, which is fantastic. There's corkmires in other spaces at the moment, so we're going to continue that hogging work towards that land down along. So that will be great because that's a key artery, as I know you guys have discussed previously, linking town to the supermarket and the King's Feet development, just making sure that there's accessibility for all. The highways team responded very profitably to our wall collapse. Thank you very much for residents' emails as well on Green Lane at the start of the month. And it was actually really nice to actually get compliments from residents that I could pass on because too often, I think, we're quick to challenge and we're quick to complain. As we know, sometimes sitting in these seats actually prays where it's due please as well. Continuing on the highways theme, there's a wonderful theme occurring. I've been on the road most of the month. I attended a meeting with our MP Liz Truss and the mayor, councillor Wright, with a group of residents so that he and I have been working with quite some time to see what measures can potentially be deployed to ease some of the challenges that we're seeing on Nuts Bridges, especially that cause damage to that historic structure and congestion in the area. That's work in progress, so bear with me. I was also pleased to attend the anti-bullying conference that was held here in the Carnegie this month. I have to say, I have complete admiration for those young people who spoke of their experiences and their positive attitude towards overcoming the impact that that bullying has had on them and challenging the behaviour that does lead to bullying. I'm pleased to continue my support of the Breckland Youth Advisory Board. Going on to Winter and the larger Norfolk County Council piece. We've got 27 new gritters out there, so obviously they will be on the key roads in Norfolk, helping our residents keep moving those main roads. Also, the Well and Whom Winter campaign launched at the start of this month. That's there to support our Norfolk residents this winter by measures such as choosing the right health service for their needs, information about hardship support, support regarding mental health, prevention and winter wellness and resilience. Whilst as always, this information is online. I'm really pleased to have worked on the return of the Your Norfolk magazine with the rest of my private colleagues at Norfolk County Council and then the magazine, which has started coming through Thetford doors in the last few days. You will find further information, can I draw your attention? And obviously, it's a tool for you to utilise with your residents. Pages four and five are really good on getting winter ready. The next edition will hopefully be hitting our doormats in the spring. And if I may, with your indulgence, Mr Mayor, in relation to your question earlier regarding the fees and that side of things. Norfolk County Council are currently awaiting the changes in the legislation. Government announced, government haven't backed up the legislation yet, so it's in process. Absolutely, and we were, I'll agree with councillor Jane, we were expecting it early this year and our website says early 2023, well, late 2023, early 2024. We're going on to early 2024 now, aren't we? No, not really, no. So we're waiting on that legislative process, so apologies for that, but yeah, it's in progress. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Continuing down the table then, any Breckland councillors? Mr Jeremy, I'm sure we've got something to say.
Thank you. I'll carry on from where Jane left off because she was kind enough to let me tag along for part of her epic tour of Thetford recently. The Road Safety Fund at County is really encouraging actually because what it does is it allocates £10,000 to each Norfolk County councillor over and above our local member budget that we have for small scale highways projects. And for us in Thetford, because we're lucky enough to have two county councillors, Jane and I get £10,000 each. And what we've agreed is that at least for some of it, there will be a sort of Thetford wide approach. So Jane spoke about the roundalls on Thetford East and I will mirror that on Thetford West to reinforce that first and for Thetford road safety message. So you'll see those roundalls go in at some point soon. The other good point about the roundalls is they're actually quite affordable. Because £10,000 sounds like a lot of money, but from a highways point of view, actually, things aren't cheap. So we're pleased to get every road into Thetford will be covered with roundalls to reinforce that message. I've also asked them to cost up proposals for a fixed flashing speed sign on the London Road. You'll be aware of the issues that we've had there the last however many years. And we know because the town council put the mobile SAM to sign up, that it is a significant speeding area. So I've asked for costings around a permanent solution. I've also asked to see what can be done on Bridge Street. There are concerns about safety around the Grammar School. The rumble strips there are completely worn away. The road markings encouraging people to slow down have also worn away and we'll look at what else can be done. And then lastly, those of you that have been here for a while will remember when the golf club representatives came and spoke to us about safety issues on the Brandon Road. And so we're looking at potential solutions to improve road safety of members of the golf club going across the road there. So lots of really positive news about road safety issues across the whole of Thetford, so I'm quite pleased about that. I'm also really pleased about some improvements to bus services locally. And both Jane and I have been banging the drum at County for improvements to our bus services. It's been incredibly popular the last few weeks. You've hopefully all seen that there's going to be a new bus service to Norwich that starts on the 4th of December, from memory. And because of the national cap on bus fares, it's £2 each way. We haven't had a bus service to Norwich for many years. And I remember when I first joined the county council, that was something that people were particularly passionate about. We've always had a good train link and that was the reason for not introducing a bus service. But we now do have a bus service coming in. And in addition to that, the new, not new, there's a new rate for the townwide service and that's going to be capped at £1.50 per journey for any rate, any journey within the boundary of Thetford. So those two things combined, I think are really positive. We're also asking, or I'm certainly asking, for areas of Thetford that have no bus service at all to be looked at because it's all very well having a reduced fare of £1.50, but if you haven't got a bus service to use, it's all pretty pointless. And there are areas of Thetford that have no bus service. And I've certainly been pestering the team to think about how we can improve coverage across the town. Bear with me, I've got a bit of a cold today because I've got a runny nose. There's, on Breckland point of view, most of my Breckland time at the moment is taken up with the Abbey Residence Group and the issue of the regeneration project there. I've been liaising with Breckland to see if somebody from the planning department can come and give some advice to the residents group on the process, not so much the application because that's, we'll go through the legal process. But what is the process for residents and councillors to be able to object or comment on the application when it comes? And just understand the difference between outline planning application and detailed planning. Breckland have agreed to do that, which I'm really pleased about. And separate to that, the leader of Breckland will be meeting with the residents group in the near future. At scrutiny at Breckland, we had various presentations at the last meeting, including one about artificial intelligence, something that I've listened to Jane speak about at County as well, it's in her portfolio at County level. And that gave me an opportunity to speak about digital exclusion. I'm a big supporter of technology, but we can't move too quickly that we disenfranchise people or digitally exclude people. For example, there's lots of people I've been working with last few weeks to access help from even Norfolk County Council or Breckland Council. And nearly always, that help is go to the website, send us an email. And there is a huge amount of the population that don't have an email, don't have a website. And I believe quite strongly that if people want to pick up the telephone, if they want to speak to somebody face to face, then absolutely that should be accommodated. And I think the general thrust of both Norfolk and Breckland is in agreement with that. You know, we have to make allowances and cover all bases to ensure people aren't digitally excluded. There's two big issues coming up at Norfolk County Council that I just wanted to mention because they will feature quite a lot over the next month. The first is about devolution. Norfolk County Council's cabinet on Monday, I think, next week, and then a full council meeting on the 12th of December, from memory, will be debating whether or not we should have a directly elected leader covering the whole of the county of Norfolk. And you'll see on the TV Andy Burnham in Manchester and other directly elected mayors. Norfolk's model is slightly different, but the proposal, which will be debated and voted upon by councillors, is whether or not, rather than having a leader of Norfolk County Council who is selected by the 84 county councillors, whether or not the public can choose a directly elected leader in the same way that you currently vote for a directly elected police commissioner. There's a continuation of that. There's various pros and cons. If anyone's got any particular strong views on devolution, do let me know. It's a complicated subject, but actually, if it goes ahead, it will be a fairly significant change for the county. So it's, you know, it's important that we make the right decision or at least try and weigh up all the pros and cons. The other issue is the Norwich Western Link Road. Seen maybe in the press the last few weeks, the government has announced a significant amount of funding for the Norwich Western Link Road. This is the road on the west of Norwich around Western Longville and places like that, Longville. It's expensive, is the bottom line. And the Norfolk County Council share is going up significantly at a time when we are seeing huge cuts to services. At the moment, the government is contributing 85% of the total bill. And if they stick to 85% at the current costs, including the cost of borrowing, we're talking over £100 million of Norfolk County Council's money. That's a huge sum of money for Norfolk County Council. And that's assuming that the bill doesn't drag on and the costs increase at a time when we are making cuts to services, when we are selling buildings. I've been against the Western Link Road for a long while because of the risks to the environment and because of the cost. But councillors will, certainly the cabinet will debate that on Monday. And I'm sure at some point, the county council will vote on whether we continue to pursue the Western Link Road. There is the option that the government may decide to increase the amount from 85 to 100%. But even if they do that, the cost to the county council will still be significant, over 50, 60 million pounds. So one way or the other, it's going to be expensive. That means obviously that there's less money potentially for road safety initiatives, highways issues in places like Thetford. So although it's county wide issue, I think it has a direct link to us here in Thetford. So I wanted to mention that, just to give you a flavour of some of the issues that Jane and I, also Jane, because she's on the cabinet. I just have to go to full council, Jane has to go to cabinet as well. But they're the sorts of issues that we have to debate and they are complicated and they are expensive. And, you know, we try and make the best possible decisions when we take our votes and that's what we're doing in relation to devolution and Western Link again, when we get there.
Thank you. Moving on then to what was going to be 48123. Unfortunately, Sam Chapman and I can't be with us this evening, so that's going to be postponed, I think, until February meeting, hopefully. So then 48223, council response to Norfolk policing budget. Councillor Land, I think you're going to lead on this one.
Chair, it's budget setting time again coming up to Christmas. And the police are setting a budget that will be reflected in your council tax. This is a proposed response to their consultation on policing. Thetford Town Council believes that people feeling safe and secure at home and in their community is a core priority. Must be a significant focus for the police partner organisations. While there are a number of areas of focus in a complex budget, we would like to emphasise our view about, one, the importance of visible policing in our communities. Without a presence, without a police presence, residents can feel anxious, dispossessed and disempowered. Secondly, we would like to highlight a specific concern locally regarding county lines of drugs related crimes specifically. Thetford is one of the biggest population centres in Norfolk. However, it appears to see less visible police presence in other areas. Our location on the A11 dual carriageway makes us perfectly exposed to issues such as county lines and we do not believe enough is being done to address this. And we do not believe enough is being done to address this. Visible policing has reduced significantly over a number of years, largely due to the scrapping of police community support officers or PCSOs as we would normally call them. The cut of PCSOs has been noticeable across Norfolk, including here in Thetford, where they were well respected. They're also one of the most visible aspects of policing. Their presence acted as reassurance to the public and also an important touch point to connect the public to policing. They also provided additional benefits by collecting valuable community intelligence. The loss of this community policing aspect has been keenly felt. Figures show that from twenty ten to twenty nineteen, the overall strength of the Norfolk Constabulary has decreased. This is before even taking into account cutting PCSOs. Whilst numbers have been increasing in recent years, we have lost many officers with significant experience. We would encourage the commissioner to develop engagement opportunities with the police and the community, building up those connections locally, helping the police to become part of the community again. A core priority for Thetford Town Council is to make Thetford a great market town with an active high street. To this end, it is vital that the town is free from antisocial behaviour and that people feel confident that the streets are secure. Thetford Town Council has recently supported an extension to a public space protection order, PSPO for Thetford. This has been a vital tool aiming to help prevent antisocial behaviour in the town centre. However, its success relies on there being sufficient personnel to enforce the rules. We feel that the PSPO has not been as effective as it could have been because of issues around capacity. Support agencies in town are at their lowest for many years. We've seen a lot of fabulous connections, Matthew Project and a whole range of other support services. Reduce its services but increase in demand puts it's horrible pressure on those agencies that remain. For example, drug and alcohol support service Change Road Live, CGL, has more addiction casework than now than it has had for years. As funded for support services has been reduced, there is a danger that more and more people who need support will find themselves without. This will undoubtedly increase pressure for the police. We ask the commissioner to consider additional services in Thetford to combat drug and alcohol addiction and youth crime and to bring, to stop young people becoming involved with drugs at an early age and thereby cutting off the county lines crisis. Latest statistics on crime show that Thetford has higher rates of various types of crime compared to the rest of Norfolk, including antisocial behaviour, people possessing weapons, and most worryingly, violence and sexual offences. We welcome investment in services such as the Daisy Programme and will be keen to explore how Thetford residents could benefit further from these services. We will be keen to learn what the police are doing to prevent these types of crimes from occurring.
Believe that document has been circulated via email to councillors.
Could I ask the officers to have a copy please? The officers have a copy of it.
So, are there any comments? Commissioner McDonald first.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council of Land, I think that's a really good document, particularly in it states that we are short of police and that's had a significant impact. I think it's also important that you've highlighted in there that it's the other services that really make an impact and result in the need for more policing. There is one thing I would like to see in addition to that. Additional support from licensing to reduce the proliferation of off-sales alcohol in the town centre. This would no doubt ease some of the drink-related antisocial behaviour. Again, the Police and Crime Commissioner has no greater pull over licensing as he does over CGL or anything else. But I think it's worth noting that this all-round approach is what we're aiming for. But I would move that as an amendment if I may. Thank you.
So Peters and councillor.
I'd like to say, I think this is one document as well. And I'd like, I can't stress it enough, I think we do need the PCSOs. The stuff we've had going on in the town centre of recent hasn't helped the situation. And the perception is that it isn't safe in our town centre. And I think it's worthwhile we do get that police presence. And I'd urge that the council support this document and possibly the amendments.
Is it right?
Yeah, I agree. Fitz just said we need the PCSOs, we need a visible police presence in town. Talking to residents recently who were being very intimidated by drugs.
Please draw us a bit further.
Very intimidated by visible drug dealing and drug-taking in the streets. It was visible. When they contacted the police, they didn't feel supported. They felt that if there were PCSOs who knew about the area, who knew about the communities, they would be more supported in the area. They felt that the police turned up, then made it very obvious who had called them, which they felt was more intimidating. So if we had the PCSOs, part of our community, know the people, know what's going on and are also a visible deterrent to the sort of crimes that we're seeing on the streets.
Who else wish to speak to?
One thing as well to know, I'm glad, well, the hard work that went into the last, by the way, Max Amendment as well, is the police commissioner conducted a seminar outreach session. A really inconvenient hour with very short notice. I think one thing we should be pushing other councillors for him to come and speak to us, speak to the public at times that work for everyone. Because we're not, we're going to really struggle to have this communication, an open communication with him if he doesn't turn up. Or if he does turn up, it's a terrible hour when none of us can attend. Most of us work full-time, most of the people in Thetford work full-time. We can engage with him if he conducts these outreaches at times like he did in the library a few weeks ago, I think it was. I think that's something as well we should be pushing is to have as much open communication, bringing him here, having sessions with him offline. But again, at hours where everyone can attend, not just the select few.
Thank you. Anybody? Is Bretto?
I should just make a little bit of a break. We watch that the amendment regarding provision of additional services is fundamental. So thank you for all the work and contributions. But if we go back a few years, we used to have in town the organisation Norcas, which was run by government to deal with people with gambling and addiction issues. Matty Project was heavily subsidised and we were doing a lot of work in town. All those things have been reduced, some of them completely axed off or substantially reducing the services they can provide. I think as much as we need a police presence in town, and it's fundamental we have it, because I think it's completely right. There's been this understanding that the town is no longer safe for many, and that puts people off. It's a service that's a local business, which is not good for anybody in town. So we need that heavy presence. But I think the ancillary services that go with it for prevention and actually going at the root of the problem are really what needs to be tackled. I think the investment and the focus needs to be on those ancillary services to prevent the issues from arising and then dealing with people that have those issues so they don't become, don't become factors. So, you know, go back into the addictions, they need to, otherwise you're going to be a perpetual cycle.
Go to Jeremy.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to see that there's agreement around there needing to be a focus on prevention. Because we have seen at the closure of so many services in Thetford. And I remember the youth service, I remember connections, I remember Norcas, I remember the Matthew Project, all sorts of different organisations with a focus on crime prevention. Because it's all very well, once the crime has happened, there being a police who may turn up and may arrest somebody if you're lucky. But the absolute focus has got to be on preventing the crimes from happening in the first place. And in lots of cases, you can arrest people as often as you like, but actually there is additional support that's needed to stop the offending, to stop the re-offending. I think we've been left out a little bit in Thetford from a police commissioner point of view. The key role of a police commissioner is to, the clue's in the title, is to commission services with a crime and antisocial behaviour focus. And, you know, what are we having in Thetford that's been commissioned to, to address these issues? As Terry mentioned, I think the latest stats only go up to about twenty nineteen in terms of police numbers. But we have seen a huge population growth here in Thetford, we've seen population growth in Norfolk. I think Norfolk-wide, the population has increased by about seven percent. I'm not sure if the police force has increased by seven percent. And also crimes are a lot more complicated now than they ever were. But what does bother me is the fact that the police are so less accessible now, particularly with the loss of PCSOs. They used to be out and about in the community, they used to meet with councillors, they used to meet with residents associations. And actually, there's an awful lot of intelligence that they've picked up, which could inform police officers and the wider police force. And it's not mentioned in the consultation, but I do just want to say at some point, I hope there is a consultation on the police commissioner role itself. They've been in place for ten years now across the country, police commissioners. And in theory, they're there to hold the chief constable to account and make the police answerable to the communities that they serve. I looked that up because I wasn't quite sure what the role was, which sounds very inaudible. But the police commissioner's salary is a hundred thousand pounds a year, that's more than MPs. And the Norfolk budget for providing the police commissioner's office, not the money for commissioning services, not the money for the police, just for the police commissioner's office is one point five million pounds a year. We have the town council, we have a Breckland council, we have Norfolk County council. I fail to see the difference that having a police commissioner makes. And I think there are, there is money that could be saved by frankly scrapping the role of the police commissioner. Probably best not to put that in our responsible, they might not take too kindly for it. I think actually there is a time that's come after ten years of having police commissioners that we consider, are they working? Are the police more accountable now than they were ten years ago? Do we as members of the public have more of a set of police priorities than we did ten years ago? As councillor Sturrock mentioned, the, I had intended to go to the consultation session in Thetford. It was at ten o'clock on a Monday morning in the library. If you work, if you've got other commitments and it's very difficult to engage, there's an online consultation and all the rest of it. But these things are very poor level of responses. I don't think we're holding the police to account through the police commissioner role and it's very expensive. I think UK-wide, because again, I looked this up, a hundred million pounds a year around the UK just to provide police commissioners and their offices, a hundred million every year around the UK. So whilst I support the letter that's being posed, and I think it's improved by councillor McDonald's amendment, I do think at some point we need to be asking the question is, do we need a police commissioner?
So everybody, councillor Brindle.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I've heard a lot of very good common sense from around the table. And the last point is totally true, we do have to have discussions sometime about finding for money as regards this particular job. And in fact, the police commissioner tells us that his role is something quite different to what was described then. He needs to provide Norfolk Constabulary with resources to investigate crime, support victims and keep Norfolk safe. To do that, he has to persuade Norfolk County Council to spend a lot more money and the central government of the UK would spend a lot more money. I have to say, that is a tough task and he hasn't managed them. And you do have to ask why we should pay for them. I wanted to refer also for May to, and I mentioned, I think that was councillor McDonald, and I apologise if I've got it wrong, we're talking about licensing.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, so I think there's an issue about licensing, which needs really a little more attention. There are dozens and dozens of places in Thetford where you can buy alcoholic drink, pubs, clubs, shops. If you closed every single one of them, and it is truly dozens, it's probably more than a hundred, believe it or not. People simply go, what a lot of people do anyway, to go to supermarkets. So I think we have to accept that alcohol is going to continue to be easily available in Thetford. And therefore, we are obliged to turn to what we should have always been focusing on, which as other councillors have said already, is prevention. We have to persuade people that there's a better way of life than solid drinking. I'm not sure that's the job of the police commissioner, but it's the job of someone. And I think we should be indicating this is satisfaction with the number of licensed outlets, but it's crying in the wind. There are dozens and dozens and dozens. And what we need is to persuade people not to use them so much.
Is Bretto?
I was going to say, bring a parallel issue that kind of links in with each of the policing. I think there is a major lack of communication between the different agencies. And I think, no, it's good to reinforce the police, but also to make, for our side of things as a council, reinforce the authority, the commissioner, et cetera. And we need more conversations with the local businesses and the people in town, tackle the issue as a whole. I'll give a practical example down to sort of a micro, a more smaller level. We have been desperate of an issue at the moment with the factories and Two Sisters particularly, it's a business locally. The highs are going on many different places. What happens is they have the volume of workers and, for example, they organise the way that these workers do their shopping, organise themselves. And they go to shops or they come to town in rental buses or organised, particularly one is on every Friday. The company organises buses, fills them up, all the workers, workers have the opportunity, per se, of doing their shopping or actually accessing services locally on a Friday evening. This lasts for an hour, which means that for an hour, for example, shops like supermarkets like Little and a few others where this bus stopped with people doing their shopping get overwhelmed. Now, they'd be having issues with that, chaos, disruption and a few other issues. And the reason why I'm raising this point is, I had conversations with supermarket workers, with businesses. I've seen the buses themselves, I've been there, I've observed directly what's going on. And I think situations like those, I don't think there's a lot of boys that are really aware of what goes on on the ground. Not only with the addictions and social behaviours, generically with problems locally. I think there's a detachment between the police services and the business and what goes on on the ground with people. I think more communication needs to be made and I think the police service need to be more aware of what goes in the ground. For that, that's what the PCSOs and the people that are more grounded and work daily with the people in town would be able to build their link. Now, accessing the PCSOs, obviously, as Terry mentioned, is obviously the problem. If there's no, if there's no officers there to build that knowledge on the ground, to take it up to the authorities, to the upper area and the ladder, obviously, they're not going to be aware of what's going on, they can't tackle it. I think we need to make them aware that besides the resources and the ancillary services for prevention of crime that we need, while we need a few individuals on the ground, officers that actually know the places, get in conversations with the local businesses and the people on the ground and gather their intel and pass it on to actually have a more focus. So every time they do decide on something or put their resources in advance to the problems, they target the places that we will need it.
The letter, I think, is broadly received and the feeling that they want to add the licensing side. I'm very conscious that we have a group called STAG that doesn't seem to get the commitment from the police to come along and carry out things. And I think that links to councillor Bretto's point. If we had a regular meeting with the beat managers or the superintendents or the sergeants so that they are made aware on a regular basis what are concerns and what we see every day as we go down the King Street and see things happen, then I think that could be something we could incorporate within the letter there to ask for that to happen. On councillor Sturrock's point, I think it's worthwhile us asking for a separate meeting for the Crime Commission to come and address the council, which I think, you know, could be left outside that letter. But in the main, are we happy to adopt councillor McDonald's idea of talking about licensing? And then I think also an extra commitment for attendance at STAG.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councillor Anderson.
You can second.
So shall I propose that then and be seconded?
Terry's proposed it. And will you want to recirculate it, what you put the amendment?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the whole rest of it's, Terry's asked for the gender item, I think he's proposing.
So you're happy to propose, so land.
I'll propose.
Over secondary, please, councillor McDonald. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, so then we're on to four eight three twenty-three. Just bearing in mind, community engagement, bearing in mind the councillor Kai Birds are talking about the various consultations. I suspect we ought to be making noises about that. I wonder if the bus service, I know it's been promoted, but it's something that residents should be made aware of. That not all, everybody's on Facebook and gets it popped up. But even if we've got leaflets within the town council here, I think it'd be useful to make people aware because
because we do get people coming to here to ask about things. We do have the mayor's carol service coming up, so another bit of community engagement which I know is going out there, as is the Christmas lights which on Friday. Is there anything else, community engagement wise, we want to add? No? Okay, then that concludes our meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance and happy Christmas if you haven't seen before. Thank you. Nothing on my agenda. So I've got committee officers' updates, apologies. So, four eight five twenty-three, exclusion of press and public. See the resolve in pursuit of public bodies, Act ninety-sixty, press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business and grounds publicity prejudiced for public interest by reason of confidential nature of the business to be discussed. We have to exclude press and public. Thank you. Do we have anything?
No.
It's been getting to the paper. Oh, done.